Five fifty. We're going to, oh, do we need to open by move motion?
You have to declare the meeting.
Okay.
R and R hearing, you know, but.
Yeah, move that we order. Sorry.
You're good.
Order that we, that the revenue neutral rate hearing for twenty-five, twenty-six officially be opened for public comment.
Okay, and just for the record, John Stern, Board Member Stern, is attending remotely by the phone here, so. Um, yes, uh, we did have to post this and notice the public because we are exceeding our revenue neutral rate. If you take a look at the document in front of you, actually, the three, uh, levying funds that we had last year and those same funds this year were actually levying less in. And had we not passed our bond issue, we actually wouldn't have to go through this. But, um, they combined in the aggregate, all of the funds, and because, uh, we did pass the bond issue, that added nineteen, in this case, nineteen point three eight seven bills, or about seven hundred sixty-three thousand dollars of revenue. And that exceeds what we levied last year, so we do have to go through the process of stating that we're exceeding, uh, exceeding the revenue neutral rate for twenty-five, twenty-six. So again, if you look at the actual taxes levied there, uh, kind of in the middle of the page there, and you see what their corresponding rates were last year, and then you go over all the way to the right-hand side under twenty-five, twenty-six, and you see the proposed taxes to be levied and the proposed tax rate for those first three funds where we did levy something, you can see that we went down rather significantly. Six twenty-four, I'm using round numbers here, six hundred twenty-four thousand to six hundred six thousand, nine hundred two thousand to four hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred nineteen thousand to three hundred fourteen thousand. So we actually decreased in all of those, um, unfortunately or fortunately, depending on how you look at it. We did pass a bond issue, which we didn't have last year, which is why we're exceeding the revenue neutral rate. That adds in additional seven hundred sixty-three thousand dollars of levying authority, nineteen point three eight seven bills. So if you go down to the bottom there, where you actually calculate the revenue neutral, um, taxes and rate, um, you'll see that we're exceeding it, and it's solely because of the, um, bond and interest fund. Any questions with that? Ultimately, we do need a resolution, um, uh, passed to exceed, it's revolu- resolution nine, twenty-five, one, resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate. If anyone is sick. Oh, did you move? Uh, sorry. So.
I move, we approve resolution number nine dash twenty-five dash one, resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate as presented. Vote.
Second.
Okay, we need a roll call vote.
Okay, um, John, we have to go through a roll call vote here. This is part of the procedure. Okay, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good. So, um, Madam President, if you just want to maybe start over there and come around or here. She's pointing at you, John.
John Stern.
I vote aye.
Okay, Steve Miller.
Aye.
Craig Merritt.
Aye.
Whitney Asher.
Aye.
Um, okay, resolution carries, or motion carries four, zero. And I order that the revenue neutral rate hearing for twenty-five, twenty-six be closed.
Are you done? John, we're waiting until five fifty-five. We're a little bit ahead of schedule.
Okay, that sounds good. And also let you know, um, I can't hear, not hear anybody else very well.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna move you closer to her, 'cause typically people don't have a problem hearing me.
Okay.
Okay, it's five fifty-five, so we're going to open the budget hearing for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six year for public comment. And anyone in attendance like to comment?
There's no commentary, I'll explain the budget a little bit.
Okay.
Obviously, budget is front and center in this district, and I've been working on this for quite a while. Um, if you look at the far left-hand side, and we've kind of already covered this with the R and R hearing, but, um, we're levying twenty mils in the general fund, which is six hundred six thousand dollars and change in, in revenue. That's statutory, we don't have a choice in that. Supplemental general, we're levying twelve point six eight two mils, which is four hundred ninety-nine thousand, just short of five hundred thousand. That's significantly down from what we levied last year. And then we're continuing to levy our eight mils in capital outlay, which is about three hundred fourteen thousand dollars and change. And then if you go down further, um, this is the first year, obviously, for bond and interest, for our new, uh, bond levy. And then we do actually levy three mils for the rec commission. That's really not ours, but they use our tax base, and we're the entity that collects the taxes, so we're sort of a pastor entity. They tell us what to levy, we levy it, um, the county collects it, sends it to us, and then we send it to them. So we've got a budget, um, the amount that we're ultimately gonna receive from them. I feel like this is a good budget. I might typically budget high, we won't spend all of these dollars. This allows us to avoid having to republish later in the year. Um, this gives us enough authority to cover pretty much any contingency. And, um, other than the new bond and interest levy, it actually represents a, um, decrease of right at about, give or take, right at ten mils, um, of, of taxes. So I feel good about our budget. We did take it to Topeka, actually, we did a Zoom, uh, conference call with, um, some officials in Topeka. They looked, booked it over, thought it was a sound budget. I explained our circumstance, our declining enrollment, and they, they felt like this would prep us well going forward. It was nice to be able to decrease taxes in an era when, um, we did pass bond issue to try to mitigate some of that effect. And, um, but again, I feel really good about our budget. These numbers are inflated a bit, so that we have enough authority to encounter any and accommodate any contingency we might face. And, um, like I said, I feel like it'll get us through here and have more momentum. And you will approve this ideally, um, later on in the regular board meeting, there is no actual retake at this hearing. Do you guys have any questions about our budget? Oh, we do keep all of the budget information from previous years and the current year in the district office. Uh, we'd also do have some information on our website as well, so if anyone is interested in knowing what specific numbers are, or they just want reference to something, they can go online, or they can contact the central office. Again, um, as you guys will know, I'm relatively well-versed in, in budget. I did help, uh, a couple of other districts out this year in trying to, um, help them finish their budget. It's a passion of mine, I always leave it open, I've never had any takers. If someone is interested in sitting down with me and I can explain how the budget works, I'd be more than happy to do that. I don't anticipate my door getting pounded on for that and then an overwhelming show of interest in that. But I do leave it open, 'cause sometimes you do get some people to ask questions, particularly if and when our budget gets tight. They may want to know, you know, why are we spending certain monies on certain things, how does this work? And remember too, budget really is just a number, we have to have the authority to spend it. We can't spend more than these amounts. These amounts sort of act as a ceiling, and it kind of protects the public. So ultimately, these numbers here, um, that you see, I guess, from, as you see it, the third column from the far right, budgeted expenditures, we cannot expend any more than those numbers in that column in those funds. And outside of budget credits, which are relatively small, so. With that, Madam President, if I don't have anything else, if you have any questions, I'll certainly answer them. If not, um, it's really the end of the hearing.
All right, order that the budget hearing for twenty-five, twenty-six be closed. We have just a minute for me.
Okay. John, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, I hear, I hear well.
Yes, he has a chance to unmute when he's on top.
Okay.
Okay, it's six o'clock, so we're going to call our meeting to order. Do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Motion to adopt the agenda. What does that, do I wanna adopt the agenda?
I see, I do an motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Short, short staff tonight, you guys.
I didn't know John wanted to chime in.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt, to adopt the agenda. Ask if none of all in favor say aye.
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 All of pose same side, motion carries four, zero. Okay, we'll move to Eagle Excellence Award.
Ally, it's your show.
Well, I have my two Eagle Excellence Award winners here. I have Chrissy Fisher and I have Sean O'Neill, and you get to come up and hold the big check.
Oh, not the big check.
Oh, I don't have a big check today, I'm sorry, I lied.
Somebody get the real one.
You get the real one.
Pose that, I'd like a stick and pose your hand.
There you go.
Yeah, put the short one in the middle.
Okay.
Uh, so, these guys have spent countless hours outside of contract, outside of their job duties. Optimism is our theme of this month, and the beginning of the year is on my desk. It is looking for optimism and, um, the good in others, and these two have given me, um, like a new fire for this school year. They're both very, um, passionate about what they do and are very encouraging to their teammates, to everybody around, um, about their students, and just trying to find new ways, think outside the box, to make this a good culture, a good place to be, and, uh, always have some new ideas and feedback for me, and I just wanna say how much I appreciate their time and effort and love spreadsheets and all the beautiful work that they do, so. Just wanted to say thank you both. And, um, I do have a request, if it's possible, to move the strategic plan up. Mrs. Fisher does have her son playing football tonight, if that's possible.
Yes, are you presenting on the strategic plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Well, thank you guys.
I will say, thank you for the energy you bring, it doesn't go unnoticed. I've had many people, uh, comment on that, so thank you for doing that, really appreciate it.
I will hand these out.
I'm very thankful it's a small group.
I, I think my stories of students are ready.
Absolutely.
So unfortunately, my yearbook kid, I mean, not unfortunate, they're very busy kids, um, they could not join me today. I think we're gonna try to have them join me another time, um, once we get a little farther along with the yearbook. Um, but Ally wanted me to share, um, a kind of the starting design. So I take kids to a yearbook camp in July, in Wichita, um, where we go through, we get our cover designed by professionals, and then we kind of pick out our theme for the year. And this year, they really wanted to go with the theme of homegrown, um, so it's all about Ellenwood, it's all about our town, about our school. And so our mock-up of the front cover, um, is the first page, and so the letters inside home, um, there's gonna be pictures of around town. They're just random pictures for napos, and then those in a little bit. Um, the next page is the font selection and the color palette that they chose. So color palette-wise, they tried to take inspiration from some things around town, so like, there's like the water tower blue, like eagle red, um, and some other things from around town. The next page is the fall divider that I'm working on. Um, so I do all the dividers in the book, um, just basically to divide up into different sections. We do a chronological book, and so it's like fall, winter, spring, and then like the people and resources section. So that's the start of the fall spread, and then so far, we only have one, um, kiddo that's working on, well, that's got a mostly completed spread. So Maddie Hamakey and Lauren Ringwald, um, are working together on this very first, um, student spread of the book. And so they covered the back-to-school bash, um, the showcase, and, oh, the Fizz Fest that Schools USA had. So we just gotta add interviews and a little bit of fine tuning, and then we're good. Um, they decided on a scrapbook theme too, so a lot of what they wanted is they wanted to take, um, pictures of things around town and make them into stickers that we can utilize in our books. So the last page is sticker examples, where they have gone out and taken pictures, and then I cut out the background. Um, we can use those as stickers, um, throughout our book. So there's a couple on my fall divider, and there's a couple on Maddie's page, and. I was like, I'm pretty excited about the book this year.
And, and I have tasked her and specifically not her, but her students, um, they've taken a lot of ownership in going around and finding some of the really positive things that our kids are doing, and showcasing the hard work that they put in and sharing that with the community, because sometimes it gets lost in all the things that we have going on, and we wanna make sure that we're able to showcase some of the things. Um, we know our athletes are amazing, you know, we've got clubs that are good, um, there's just so much going on, so she's done a wonderful job, sharing out with the community using social media, um, I think we've got a new Instagram page.
Yeah, we started Instagram last year. Um, there's a couple of students who are a little more motivated to do Instagram. I have, I haven't experienced with it, so they're kind of teaching me, um, how to do the Instagram, and I kind of take the Facebook and, you know, trying to post every time we go to an event and we take pictures, um, just showing people what's going on in the school, and especially showcasing their work too, 'cause they, they do a lot of really great work. Um, and I don't feel like people get to see that unless they purchase a book, um, so just sharing the, the pictures and stuff that they do. Trying to do a little better. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christie.
Thank you, Shalom.
Thank you, have a good night, you guys.
You too.
Okay, we're gonna move to item six A for public relations. Um, is anyone, um, wishing to address the board this evening? Any board reports?
I was gonna say, it's good to see progress at our building, uh, the grade school, and the wood up project here. It's starting to take a little bit of shape at the grade school, and it's a good thing a long, long ways ago. Looking forward to winter time and seeing the difference in the climate in that building.
Adams Brown has completed their audit, and they're going to ideally present to the board this October, and it'll be a traditional report, what they've done in the past. I don't think they had any hiccups, I think they were, um, very satisfied with what we'd presented. Um, I think there was one issue with how we accounted for bond proceeds, and we were supposed to, I think, encumber the entire project the minute it was approved, and we actually just encumbered what was paid out. So that was one, and obviously, this is the first time we've done a bond issue in a capital projects fund. But they modified that a little bit. Other than that, I think they felt like it was, everything was pretty clean. They will be here in October and present to us, they'll hand out reports, and those will be for you guys to, to review. Enrollment numbers, uh, I've done some preliminary analysis on enrollment numbers, they're right there in front of you. If you kind of looked at the totals there, we have a total of, now, this also counts the students that attend grade bands, so this is gonna be a little bit more than some of the numbers we're used to. Hundred seventy-seven students at Elwin Grade School, forty-seven at those same grade levels at St. Joe's, sixty-seven at Elwin Middle School, eleven at those grade levels at St. Joe's, and then a hundred and fifty at Elwin High School, for a total of three hundred ninety-four students. St. Joe's has right at fifty-eight students. That is a significant drop from what we had last June, about thirty students, even more so than I was predicting. So, um, official count date is September twentieth, so none of this is actually in the books yet. I feel that I completed SO sixty-six reports, sent it off to the state, based off of our September, September twentieth count, and then they come and audit those numbers, and then they tweak it a little bit, and then, um, that comes about a final number. Usually, September twentieth, we're pretty close, we don't get many surprises there. So, um, just wanna let you know, look those enrollment numbers over, if you have any questions, let me know, but that is down significantly, which is a segue into our next point, which is point number three. And I wanna get after this sooner rather than later, so we can be as transparent as possible, and we can find the best solution for the district. But, um, after our September twentieth count date, at the October board meeting, I am gonna spend, and at a point when our audit is actually being presented and completed, I wanna spend a little time with the board explaining our budget and what some of the things we're gonna have to do going forward, because we do have, um, some things that we need to talk about, talk about, there's some things that we need to address. Um, I'm being very careful with my language and being very careful with who I share this with. And I think the rollout of, of some of this should be, you know, very planned and orchestrated and, um, very sensitive. But, um, none of this should come as a surprise. But regardless of how much you've front-loaded, it seems like every time you have to begin talking about some of the things we're gonna have to do, it, it comes to shone to people, and I get that. So, um, I wanna spend a little bit of time in October, we'll probably put something up on the television, and I'll make a short presentation on kind of where we're at. I wanna explain everything in detail to the degree that people can kind of understand it, and I wanna really bring the school funding formula down to the layperson level, so that they can fully understand, when we talk about what we do, they have a comprehension of it. And it's not just abstract, some superintendent that specializes in budget is telling us what's going on, but actually, I want them to follow along, so when we start talking about, start using specific vocabulary, start quoting numbers, they're right along there with us, and it's not something that is, is foreign to them. But, um, I'm gonna let you know right now, the recommendations I'm gonna make to the body, um, are more the tweaks and adjustments. We have to get after it, and I feel like if we can get in front of it, um, you know, Steve, I hate to bring this up, but you have some experience with this a long time ago now, fifteen years ago, and, um, we're at the point, and I've tried to ease into this. I've, I've told everyone this day's coming, I've tried to ease into this as gently as I can, and now it's to the point where the, the, um, the person who just ultimately knows the truth is gonna have to come out, and we're gonna have to have some hard conversations. I don't think they need to be alarming. I don't think, I think they can be something that I think if we, um, yeah, I'm big on expectation, if we can get in front of expectation and do this, um, you know, in a manner that is, is efficient and appropriate, I feel like it could be, on the whole, in that part, because then we can begin growing into whatever our new size becomes. But, um, we can continue to operate the way, the way we have them, and that's just the bottom line. So I'll have a presentation for you guys in October, and I'll probably even put out some information before that, so you guys can review. This way, if you guys have questions, you can ask me before the meeting, and then we can present to public. Along those lines, uh, as you can tell, we've got a very much a budget-oriented superintendent report this month. Sheri Holmes and Chris Comark and I are going to meet, um, on September sixteenth, and we're gonna talk about the library arrangement. I think Sheri has already met with Chris, and I think the city understands kind of the dynamic that's, that's in play, and we need to come up with something that is an updated version of what we've been doing since the nineteen sixties. Ultimately, right now, we're paying for things that we don't need to support our mission. And in a budget tight, uh, in an environment where the budget is tight, I don't feel like that is something we, you know, well, to not think. I'm, I'm gonna start choosing my words very carefully, it's something we can continue to do. And, um, I think the city understands that, I know the school understands that, I've had some conversations with Sheri, I think she fully understands that. So I did want to let you know that, um, we are gonna meet on September sixteenth to start talking about a new arrangement on how, um, resources are paid for, how personal is paid for, and to what extent each jurisdiction wants to utilize the library. KSB Annual Convention, November fourteenth through sixteenth. Um, I'd like to know how many you guys are attending, we have hotel reservations, we do not have registrations yet. Registration, we can always do later, hotels are more of a, a challenge. And this is something we do for outgoing, uh, board members, so Craig, you're still invited to attend, even though your, your term is gonna be ending. And I will be reaching out after the election to, um, talk if, if our new board member wants to attend. I really don't wanna say too much until the election, although unless there's a big write-in campaign, we kind of know the outcome. Um, but we also do invite our new, and this is something that the family attends, the board member and spouse. Um, it, it's a good time for us, but we do allow the outgoing board member to attend and the new incoming board members to attend as well. There's some good breakout sessions and training opportunities for that, so, um, I will keep you guys abreast. I guess my question would be, and it's, it's November fourteenth through sixteenth, we usually stay that Friday night and Saturday night, and then we come home on Sunday. Steve, are you planning to attend, to the best of your knowledge?
I am, under protest for timing and opening weekend of Fesent season.
Yes.
What are you thinking?
Fesent season, and then, um, the musical as well, so I get pounded on that as well, so. Craig, are?
No.
Not gonna be attending, okay. Whitney?
I believe I will be, I may not be there that Friday night, though, but we'll see.
Okay. Gary, you don't have to give me an answer now, but maybe think about it, if that's something.
Actually, all I'm doing is just sitting here, listening.
Okay.
Learning.
Sure. And I will probably reach out, again, I try not to do too much before the election, 'cause I never want to look like I'm assuming anything, but I might reach out to you and say, look, if your, if your candidacy is successful during the election, you might wanna keep that Friday and Saturday open. It is a, and it really, it's just a great bonding opportunity with other board members. We usually take our whole board down, and it's a chance for you to.
Where is it at?
It's in Wichita.
Wichita.
At the Hyatt, yep. And, um, we go down and we, it's just a great opportunity for you to learn. But, um, I'll reach out to you, and if, if you can't do it, that's fine.
Okay.
But if you can.
You appreciate the offer.
Yeah, you're more than welcome to. And then I'll, John, do you have an answer yet on what, whether or not you can come?
Yes, I'm planning on coming in with Ken also.
Perfect, okay. So, um, we already have the hotel reservations for everyone, we can always cancel those, and then, like I said, the registration can be done shortly before, so. I'll probably reach out, I'll mark you guys down as going, Craig probably not, I'll reach out to you, Gary, and then ideally, uh, we'll try to figure something out going forward. Uh, let's see here, um, uh, we are participating in the statewide teacher retention survey, we've done this the last two times it was, uh, implemented, and, um, we actually had, I think, last time, almost a hundred percent participation. Gives us good feedback on what it takes to, um, uh, recruit and retain quality teachers. That is something that's obviously very important right now, we have a significant teacher shortage. I do feel like it's, um, informed some of our decision-making going forward. I like to think that, you know, when we talked about those teacher task days, and talked about some of the time that teachers need, I think that kind of emanated from some of the data that we received from this report, so we will be participating in that. I think the window opens on Monday, September twenty-ninth. Uh, let's see here, I do have a meeting with Barton County Special Services on September twenty-second. We are going to be reviewing our new co-op agreement. We had kind of amassed this summer, we thought we were operating under one agreement, we found out after there was a little bit of conflict that the agreement we were working under was never approved by the state, so we had to revert back to the, the older one, and that one is just simply out of date with some of the new laws and statutes of the books. So we've kind of committed ourselves to recreating that over the course of this year, so we're gonna meet, I think it's the third Monday of every month, and, um, that one's coming up on, um, September twenty-second. Uh, preview of coming attractions, official count date is Friday, September nineteenth this year, the twentieth on a Saturday. I do have a bond progress meeting with administration, the general contractor and the architect on September fifteenth, which is a week from today. American Fidelity will be in the district to enroll staff in the Section one twenty-five plan. And again, we're off and running, fall activity season is upon us, if you guys get a chance coming out, football, volleyball, tennis, um, cross-country, and then also, we have some other non-athletic activities going on, so if you get a chance, um, the concerts come up, musical, try to block off some time and attend those. We're off and running, um, and, and we're getting after it, so, Madam President, that's all I have for a report.
Administrator's report.
She lost the rock, paper, scissors, so she is still.
No, I think she had first time.
I'm kidding.
Baby age, height, whatever. Always start with a shout-out, beginning of the year, definitely, um, always start, Karen, Edra, they go through a lot of work at the beginning of the year. Angie, Amanda, they've done a wonderful job in ingratiating a lot of new people into our building, uh, we have some new students. Mike, Jerry, Zach, uh, working hard to make our building, uh, in the middle of bond issue, but also pulling out some leads, making sure classrooms are ready, um, Mr. Cutter. Mr. Cutter, didn't think it was going to happen, but we rearranged a whole classroom at last minute, and for classroom management purposes, the teacher said, "Let's do it," and he made it happen for us. So, we have had a lot of people putting in work in a very quick manner. Picture Day is tomorrow, so I know we didn't have school today, but Picture Day is tomorrow, staff will start at some 45, we're going to try to get the PE weight kits out of the way so they're not all sweaty and hot, see if the seniors pass around the same t-shirt this year. We keep off, we had golf tournament August 17th, so my thank you there is for the donors, we had a lot of, we had more support, I think, this year than we did even the previous year, very successful. We had quite a few new students add, I know we've lost some, but we did gain a few, one being my family member, we have two foreign exchange students this year, both from France, coincidentally, totally coincidental. Both have reported that people have been very welcoming and they're enjoying their classes. We tried something new, Mrs. Holmes at NHS gave them tours around the building and seemed to enjoy that, have somebody they could connect to, starting out the year, and just a familiar face that they could go to. Mr. Ins took kids to Ag Day, September 3rd at Diamond K, ran Stations for Younger Kiddos. Ins, Karen, Fisher, and myself are taking about 85 students on Wednesday to the State Fair, we're very, very hopeful that it won't be muddy and the buses still get stuck, so pray for no rains. So, it is a, it's a big undertaking, but I think it's very beneficial for the students, they have some good projects for them out there. Mrs. Brock sponsored cheer team, they dropped a hoist at the end of August, they did Spirit Spreader, more information to come on, a cheer clinic coming late September, early October is the plan, somewhere in there. Mrs. Coleman has been working hard to put in Johnson's Renaissance for kids to get involved in clubs and activities. We started off the first full week of school with a club rush, something we've never done before, but part of the Johnson's Renaissance, every month has a challenge. Well, my goal is to do it every month, I think realistically, especially with Task Day today, we're going to try to bite off littler pieces, maybe don't do it all at once, but we did a club rush, they got a slideshow, and then the following Friday, they all got to come down during Eagles. My understanding is, right now, we've added 10 more kids to KY, we have 40 members in history club, and I haven't heard about the rest, but I'm hearing numbers are way up in a lot of the clubs that we don't always have large numbers in. So, again, you mentioned show, upcoming musical, Mary Poppins, November 14th and 15th. And I think everybody got a phone call, text, voicemail message, whatever I did last week about the announcement for Game of Deception. We are working with Mrs. Holmes, and we had generous donations from People's Bank, United Way, the School Community Library Foundation, and we were able to provide a book for every household for grade seven through eight, for Andrew Morana, Game of Deception, about the 1936 Olympics, where it was the first U.S. Olympics basketball team during Adolf Hitler's Germany, and he will, the author will actually be joining us December 4th here at the school, we'll do an after-hours chamber coffee, and students will get to ask questions. Our English teachers, our government, and history are all working very hard to incorporate that in their classrooms, and we're looking forward to setting that up for, as I have to say, special exhibit that will be here in December.
Would you be kind enough to talk about your teacher task day today and kind of, you know, lay that day out and how we're spending it, accountability pieces and all that, I know that was a big source of discussion last year, we're very excited to have it.
Oh, yeah.
If you get, it looks a little bit different in each building, so I'd like for both you guys to talk a little bit about that.
My beginning of my year started off a little bit different, unfortunately, I lost a family member, so I was gone for the first two days of teacher training, so part of my day today was, we added in about a 15-minute chunk for every group, every subject, I got to go and have some time to hear what are their goals, what are they working on, do they have any ideas, any feedback from me, something that they thought last year didn't work, and suggestions. We had a staff meeting to set expectations first thing in the morning, then they went and did lesson planning, I've got a lot of feedback on collaboration, we have a spreadsheet, Mr. Kent and I, we did a lot of the work on it, teachers filled out a Google form before they left and gave us some ideas on how many they contacted, just got an email a few minutes ago, they heard back from almost 10 different families today, just for one teacher. So, they're hearing from people, we're also finding out if emails or phone numbers don't work, we're able to do positives and just, hey, maybe we're concerned, we want to make sure your kids start out on the right track, and get us on the right foot, make some contacts, and I think it's a surprise come conference time. We really want to build those relationships early, and...
In your building, it was first period that was contacted, is that correct?
We started off with first period, and then if they didn't have a first period, if it was planned time, they did second period, I said that that was the trial run for this month, if we find out, maybe we just pick any group, or you have a one class in particular that you know you need to contact more often than others, we can do that, but they have given us a lot of feedback, I mean, I've got a whole spreadsheet I've already been reviewing, and they've got a lot of good ideas. They have specifically asked for more briefs from me, and usually try to have a meeting or something so that if Mr. Abbott or someone is not here, they get information not only about what's happening here, but they can then bring that into BLT. That way, the loop stays in communication of what's expected of them, reiterating policies, also then setting up expectations through the year, and off to a pretty good start so far. We ended with a very short staff meeting, which will be the beginning of the day, next time, they said, that way athletics in my building particularly don't affect it if coaches have to leave early, we did have two that had to leave today, Phillipsburg and another one off the top of my head, but we want to make sure everybody's able to be in attendance, so. Got a lot of good feedback.
I have a question on the clubs, how's the chess club doing? Because I like chess.
I, we actually are already looking at hosting, we have a student that's leading the charge on getting it set up, having some traveling sets and getting practice going, unblocking chess.com, and so, as long as being used the appropriate time, it's critical thinking, I mean, it's something that we talked about using, we've moved the health room down into the north wing, and using that old health room as an assessment space so that they have, we're following compliance, that they are at individual seating rather than tables. Kids and teachers really like having it in a closer location, and then that is also giving us some space there and also in Zoll Hall to hang up that banner and to have students be able to go up there with supervision, but also be able to see it more often, if they go in and they take a test or they can go up and visit. Expanding Mr. Drew's artifacts and as we bring in more trophies hopefully and banners, that not only are we using Zoll Hall, but we can spread the exhibits elsewhere.
All right, my monthly shout-out, I'm going to start with my parents. We can't operate without our parents, they do lunch, they do morning bus, they do afternoon stuff, they do all the stuff behind the scenes, and yet they still are able to help out our kids, so our building doesn't operate without them, we're down a couple this year, so it's really starting to spread, it's a little thin, but we're making it work, so I want to give a shout-out to each of them, Dory, Stephanie, Mary, Sheila, Stacy, Joy, and Megan, so we got some great ones, they do a great job. The window project's off and running, we had a big crew today, we are starting to see some windows, if you haven't drilled by the south side there, it looks really good. I found out the plywood they have in the way is not very soundproof, you can hear the cafeteria pretty heavily, but they were in there today also working on the trim work, probably by far the most people we've had working in there, so I think once it's done, it's going to be amazing, I think we're going to see a huge difference. They have found a few of them have been cracked just by shipment, but they still put them in, that way they're in, and they said we'll come back and replace them, so, good guys, had to get a little bit of spot rain today, kind of caught them a little bit off-guard, so that's going well. Had another great open house on the 19th, I always add some excitement, I really do appreciate the staff that they put in the work to get that every day, because they're trying to get ready for school, and then on that Tuesday, we have an open house, but we were, we questioned with all the construction whether to have them in, have them not, well, we just embraced the construction and said, "Heck, let's go," and brought everybody in, and nobody seemed to have a problem, so they can kind of see what's going on, what's going on. There's a lot of windows in that building, they should have counted, 400, I think is what they said. Back to school bash again on the 29th, very successful, bounce houses, face painting, snow cones, cotton candy, hot dog meal, great time, once again, the Boston, or the Boston, Barton County softball team came over, and actually, their coaches say their kids look forward to that, they ask every year, "Are we going back to Elland Wood Grade School to help with it?" Because they'd be disappointed if they didn't, they had a great time, they got a bunch of good kids, I like the coaches over there, they do a great job. PAC is starting to crank back up, we had some new leadership step up, and we are going to get that going again, and they kind of got this one started, we kind of handed a little bit, a little bit, most of it off to them, I'm looking forward to that partnership once again to help us over with the grade school. Ms. Johnson, Ms. Ricker took their kids over to FAG Day, they had to change it to the fairgrounds because of the weather, but another good one, got them over there, got them back with the same amount of kids we took, so, you know, that's always a plus. Task Day, it was a good day, it was a really good day, I heard a lot of good compliments about it, we started the same way as they did, had a little meeting at the beginning of the day, we, then we went over, Ms. Burson went over our new data collection for the bask, and we had all the teachers just do it right there, they said, "We're here, let's just do it," and we actually moved our meeting, it was the afternoon, into the morning, and I made some schedule changes, I talked to Ms. Jacobs, you know, it was a good learning day for all of us, and I think we remove all that in the morning, get it done while BLT's during that time, moving forward, and then that way, at the end of the day, it's theirs, and they can do the planning. They, we had data meetings, Ms. Jacobs met with every group of teachers, and they sat in there, and the teachers on their own were meeting, so I sat with them, trying to figure MTSS groups, looking at their data, how we can do it. Our schedule's a lot different this year, and it's challenging because of how we have PE and how we've had music now at the same time, so it's created some difficulties, but we're working through those. And then they were making phone calls, I think elementary more naturally contacts parents more often through seesaw, email, make some phone calls, so I said, "This is the opportunity to maybe contact those parents, you don't really need to call during the week, but get in touch and say your kids are doing well," but it gives us that opportunity. And then, of course, we had lunch, and then they had some planned time to get, and they got their grades updated. I mean, it's just the time, I think we, fresh anything away, it's the time, it's the time to do stuff that they don't normally, I felt pretty good, I looked at my steps, I got over three miles today with no kids in the building, so I wanted to be out, I wanted to talk to teachers, I wanted to see what was going on, I wanted to make sure that they were having the support they needed, and we were doing this with a whole bunch of construction and saws and drills and stuff going off in the building, so, looking forward to it. I said, "It may not make a big change right away, but I think over time, we're going to, we're going to see some good changes with this." So, we're excited about it, like I said, we're going to make some tweaks to the schedule, just want some stuff, we aren't getting rid of anything, just moving the times on it, so we'll start a little bit earlier next time, started at 8:00 today, 8:15, so we'll be good.
And they completed documentation for you as well?
We got 17 responses so far, I think, is what I saw.
As of right now, grade school is sitting at...
Don't go by the percentage, because that's just who, how many were high school, how many were elementary, so we got to do something.
There was 18 for the grade school, and then the rest were high school.
That'd be all of them, so, that's all, I didn't make the pair, the pairs came and worked, I didn't need to, I said, "You guys don't need to fill them out," so, they did come in, once again, they were able to get some stuff ready for the groups, so made good use of their time today, so, I just made sure, I said, "You need to do this before you leave, it takes five, 10 minutes, max." We made it pretty simple, it's a nice Google form, click some stuff, put some information in, type a few blurbs, hit submit, and it's going, and we can put it all together into a nice spreadsheet, and we can start looking at the data, so, it'll be fun, it'll be, it'll be good to look at, and we're looking forward to it. EGS Fun Day, anybody wants to come up and walk or run on your own? It is Sunday, October 5th at 2:00 p.m. at the grade school, I think it lasts an hour, well, each lap counts for one of the classes, and if the class gets the most laps, gets to go over and play part and walk the trails over there, so it's really good. And then last but not least, I've talked to Mr. Jacobs quite a bit about this, but I will be turning in my resignation next month. I am, I've got retirement, retirement age, and it's time to go on and do something else. I did find out, with the capers, I was actually eligible November 1, because I turned 55 in October, and they round up the half-year, the full year, so I will be turning in my resignation next month, and I don't know what I'm going to do, but I just want to say thank you. Five years, this will be, year five, and it's flown by, absolutely flown by, so just want to let that, let that, make that public knowledge now, so, any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kent.
Thanks, Julie.
We will move on to consent agenda.
Okay, didn't have any questions. We had two gifts to the district for the Games of Deception book purchases from People's Bank and Trust in the United Way, $543.80 and $750.00 respectively, and then probably the big thing is appointing a board member to the School Community Foundation Board, and perhaps you don't want to do that because everyone's gone and trying to figure out who wants to do that, but, and it's not urgent, I mean, they can still conduct business, I think they just want to make sure that the board is aptly represented, so really, at any point you guys decide to do it, I think, you know, they'll be fine with it. I don't think you want to wait, you know, a year to do that, but I think maybe that's something where after you appoint a new board member, maybe that's something you guys want to, and when everyone's here, maybe have a serious discussion about, so, and I will say, if you guys want to just table that aspect, we'll just remove that from the consent agenda, item D will just go away, and then you guys want to approve A, B, and C as a consent agenda. And it would just be, you would just approve the consent agenda as amended.
Well, with D, there's nothing in there to, like, how is that part of the approval?
Just as amended, it would just be, you'd approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'm just saying, with it being in there anyway, like, it didn't make, like, it didn't fit in there in my mind, because...
Well, but really, you can, okay, procedurally, anytime you put in something with the consent agenda, you announce a name and you approve the consent agenda, then it gets approved, and it means we don't have to have a separate item for it, but you guys have the ability to remove any one or any specific item, so basically, you guys have line item veto on that, if you want to say, "You know what, we don't want to address claims this month, we're just going to pull those out," you can approve the consent agenda absent that as amended, if that makes sense.
I think we wait on that one. I don't, they meet on Wednesday nights, is that correct?
They do, yep, at 5:30, and I just feel like, you know, Craig, obviously, you're going off, so you're probably not the ideal choice, we only have two people here, I guess John's on, I think it might be best if we, if I may suggest, wait until you appoint someone, and then as a group, you guys decide with everyone here who wants to do it.
Yep.
Agreed.
So, let's pull that out.
Okay, so we will pull D, so if you amend the agenda, or if you approve that consent agenda as amended, that would be removal of D, you'd approve A, B, and C.
I move we approve the consent agenda, the exception of D.
As amended.
As amended.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries 4-0. Okay, and we have already done strategic plan, it takes us to budget update.
Again, this probably isn't the most accurate document because we're still using budgeted numbers and not September 20th numbers for the total on the left-hand side, but it does, it is somewhat illuminating because we're starting to see some expenditures play out. If you look at the first two numbers there, in general fund, last year through August, we spent $86,000, this year we spent $92,000, that's not too bad. Last year, in supplemental general, we spent $281,000, this year we spent $211,000, you add those two numbers up as operating fund... up as operating funds, we spent approximately $64,000 less this year than at the same time last year, which is good. We're gonna be watching that very carefully. The rest of the numbers are very good. We haven't had really any significant expenditures. So, we're certain use funds, don't have a lot of expenditures out of them. Our unencumbered cash balance is right where it should be. And the box is in the middle there as far as budget remaining, percent budget remaining. Really don't have a lot of meaning because that total budget on the left-hand side, which it draws from, is an inflated number. So, until we get to September 20th and really October is when we'll have that, that number isn't as meaningful. So, but it does serve to give you some guidance on these first two months of expenditures. That's all I have on that.
We'll go down to old business, state assessments for 2023-24.
Yeah, the next two items are really somewhat perfunctory. You guys have already seen these state assessment results. I put them on there because we're required to in order to approve the budget. The next item is well-building needs assessment is the same thing. So, I don't, I don't have anything to say on this. We've talked about this in the past. You know, I've been given a task which I am really excited about to try to grow these and improve these. And we're actually working on a plan as we speak. So, deal with this information what you wish. This is something that's required that I have to show you. We usually, I also show the previous year's results, but we don't have those yet. So, hopefully those will come out soon. I'll share those with you. But again, you've seen these numbers before. I don't really have anything to add. This is just something that you guys have to look at formally before you can adopt a budget.
That'll take us to item 10C for OAB resolution.
And this is something you are required to approve. This is resolution number 925-2. This authorizes the local option budget and we're setting it at 33%. That's the max you can go. And this is something we really have to do as a practical matter, but we can't levy a local option budget unless you authorize this resolution. So, it's procedural item. It's something that needs to be done before you actually approve the budget.
I move we adopt resolution 925-2, resolution authorize a local option budget for 2025-26 school years per se.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt resolution 9-25-2 to authorize a local option budget for the 2025-26 school year. As presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. And we'll go to the 2025-26 budgets.
It basically now is when you adopt it.
Yep. We had that conversation earlier, so...
Yep.
I move we adopt the 2025-26 budget as presented.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt the 2025-26 budget as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. And bond project update.
Okay. We've talked a little bit about this already. I mean, I think you guys have seen the window work down there at the grade school. I think the south side has pretty much all the windows in, the trim and the, I'm sorry, the framing and the windows. They're working on trim right now. In fact, I think some of them have started, or at least I thought they were working on that. I saw around one out there. They're at various locations. They're in the main hall today and it was rather noisy, but as Joel said, we didn't have any kids in there and they got a lot of work done. So, I feel good about that. That process is probably not going as quickly as we would like, but it is starting to progress. And I do think we're gonna have to talk about timeframe here because I'm, I don't think they're gonna get done by the end of October, if I had to guess. By the time you look at the rest of the ground level windows, which are very easily implemented and facilitated, we've got a lot to go. And then obviously you've got all those windows up top, which I'm guessing is gonna take a little bit of time just due to the logistics. So, I'm gonna visit with the architect and, you know, see what options are available to us because I am starting to get a little concerned about the weather and what's gonna happen if this starts pushing into November because that, I just know how some of this goes. And I don't, I mean, we, we had a plan in place and I don't think there were any liquidated damages presented in the, in the original bid. But I do think we need to do something to try to move this along because otherwise this easily starts turning into a discussion. Well, in the spring we'll finish. And that, that's really not something that we bargained for. Steve, please.
Yeah. Well, you need to remind that architect, this came up and her recommendation was there would be no problem in finishing on time.
Okay. Yep. So, mention that. I'll mention that in one way I next visit with her. That this was something that was brought to attention and we need a really good rest. And I will say, I'm speculating here. Maybe they have a plan to get it done before Thanksgiving. I don't know. I just, I've been in this business long enough. You guys probably know construction better than I do. And it just, it seems like there's one thing here. There's a deadline set and then it just keeps getting bumped back. And I get it. There's always reasons for it, but we really, really, really need to get this done before we get into the crux of winter. Otherwise, that just defeats the whole purpose of it. So, I will follow up, Steve. I'll, I'll make that commentary. And then roof, grade school library roof has been completed. And have we checked with the recent rains, Joel?
What's that?
Has there been anything, the roof at the grade school library, any things?
Just the fuse, but we don't know if it was like residual that, you know, we showed, you looked at them.
Yeah, but since then though?
But we haven't seen nothing.
Okay, then that probably means that that's just residual.
Yeah. It wasn't nothing major. It was no bubbles or anything like that. But since then, we've had some good opportunity to find out.
Good.
Like the inch of rain today.
Yeah. And nothing to your knowledge, no spots didn't get, didn't present themselves or anything?
Yeah, they were, up north it was a lot worse. It was like flooding.
Yeah, I know. That's what Craig was saying. 15 inches.
I had misread that. It was during the day, not over an hour.
Okay.
It was totally, yeah.
I went back. I was like, "That seems wild." Updated in an hour. And I was like, "Oh, I'm not a meteorologist."
And then roofs up in this building, it seems like they've kind of worked their way from the north and the east this way. They're starting to get things done. They have had some, their challenges a little bit. And I do think we had a little bit of water to get into an old locker room area. We cleaned that up. They came over and helped immediately. So, I do think we've been very pleased with the roof progress. And actually, that progress is, I think, going really well. So, that work continues. I'll keep you guys posted on that. We are in the beginning stages of the HVAC planning. John was able to attend one of the meetings I had with the architect that talks about that specifically, kind of what we want to do with this area. Do we go VRF? Do we do something different? John, I don't know if you have anything you wanna say about the meeting that we had on the HVAC project with the architect. Feel free to join in if you want.
Well, basically, as Ben mentioned, it was what kind of the unit are we gonna have? And, you know, the, the heart of what, the message I had and the architect and the engineering crew agreed was that we wanna have a outcome where we don't worry about the building being too cold for us to put students in. In other words, we don't have, wanna have a repeat of the, what we had happen down the grade school. And, you know, the proof is in the pudding. We actually get done. But I think folks are headed in that direction that we'll have a more dependable system that won't leave us cold in the coldest week of the winter. So, that's the direction we're headed.
Very well stated. So, yeah, we're beginning the process of that. And then that may be done, that may be broken up into multiple bids because I do think the engineer would like to implement some things like even over Christmas break. He doesn't seem to think we can do all of that work over the summer. So, he would like to do some of the things that could be done maybe during Christmas break or a spring break. It may require multiple bids, but he feels like that's the best way to ensure that the entire project is done by the end of summer. So, keep you posted on that. That's pretty much the progress of the bond issue. Again, not a lot of sexy stuff there, but we are making progress. And I feel good about what we're doing. I really feel good about the end result. Obviously, the timing of the window project isn't going the way we had planned. But I do think that when, you know, speaking to Joel's point, when we do get to the, the end of the project, I think we're gonna feel very good about it. It looks really good. And you can just, if you go up and actually make contact with the windows, it's just more robust. It's just a different material. It's a different quality of construction. So, feel good about that. Before we get to the last item, I do wanna mention, I forgot to mention during my report, the appointment of the new board member. We're gonna delay until October. We've had a lot going on there. Nothing that, you know, really needs to be discussed here. But I do think that with the absence of three people, I, I visit with Whitney and I think Whitney kinda gave me some guides on that that perhaps we should wait until the October meeting to appoint someone. So, it doesn't, if we don't have four members appointing on behalf of the other two, she agree with that? She lucky on that? And that's all I have on, on that item.
Okay. We'll go to new business survey, climate results.
I did bring this up because we just got our climate report from the Kansas Communities in Care Survey from last year. Hopefully you guys had a chance to look at that. The numbers from the last time we took this were not great. And this resulted in us, when we hired a new principal, talk about culture, talk about some initiatives. If you take a look on what would be, I think, this, consider the second page, green is good, yellow is medium, and, and red is not good. If you look at the, the area that probably has the most color, again, it's probably in that anxious, conflictual climate scale area, which is the second blue area there. Now, I will say, if you look at the check marks and the red Xs, we actually have improved immensely a lot of areas. If you improve, you get a check mark. If you go, get worse, you get an X. So, on the whole, we've actually improved. But there's still some areas that require addressing. I guess for the good news, at the high school during the past 12 months, did you ever feel so sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row that you stopped some usual activities? High school actually better than the state. We had very few high school kids at state, they stated they'd done that. Empowering Student Voice Scale in the middle school, we had two green boxes. How often do you feel that the schoolwork you're assigned is meaningful and important? We are much better than the state average. How important do you think the things that you're learning in school are going to be for you later in life? Again, much better than the state average. So, seems like we're maybe doing well in the middle school and in creating relevance and also making kids feel that the work they're doing is meaningful and important. Also too, in the middle school, teachers asked me to work on special classroom projects. We're much better than the state average. So, there's some highlights. Those are the boxes that are in the green. Some of the ones are in the red at the high school. During the past 12 months, how often have you been bullied at school? We're significantly worse than the state average. And then in the high school, I feel safe at school, which is one that that perplexes me a little bit, but something we probably need to address. That's significantly worse than the state average. So, lot of oranges there, which is a little worse than the Kansas average, we need to address. I visited with Ally about this, you know, so she's, she's very much on board. Remember, this is grade six, eight, 10, and 12. So, it takes up pretty much the entire middle school and high school. I know our sixth grades at the grade school. But there are some things that we're gonna try to do to try to address this. You know, the bullying stuff, we've really emphasized that. And we've actually improved in that area, believe it or not. If you remember correctly, the, the prior year's results were not good. And we've actually improved, but it still shows that we've got some areas for, for growth even after the improvement. I put the previous year's results on there as well. I'm looking at the 25 results. I wanted you guys to be able to compare and contrast. I don't know if you guys have any questions on that, but I did wanna get that to you so that as you guys start looking at initiatives going forward and just even the overall climate, you kinda get a feel for what's going on. We are making effort. We are really trying to address some things. And I know Ally's worked hard at trying to address some things. We visit with our staff in terms of how we need to, at the grassroots level, try to address some of these things when you encounter them because it is an ongoing issue. And to be honest with you, I don't think this is an issue unique to Ellenwood. While we are worse than the state average, I do think other districts fight this as well. And I think to some extent it's societal. When you start looking at anxiousness, you start looking at depression, you start looking at how people treat other people. And it's something that I think society is, is really trying to fight as well. So, with that, I don't have any, anything else to say. I don't know if you guys have any questions. I mostly wanted to get that out to you guys. These, these were, this climate report just came out. The survey results came out, I think it was last spring. They don't put the climate report together until they have time to disaggregate the data. And once it came out, I wanted to get that in your hands. You guys can prepare to. Improvement, but room, room remains, I guess.
I have one on this, on the Empowering Engagement Student Emergency Scale.
Yep.
There are a lot of chances for students to get involved in school activities and other activities outside the class. We got the red X on that one.
Uh huh. Is that at the high school?
That is at, uh...
Okay. Yeah, I see that. Is that, there are lots of chances for students to get involved in school activities and activities outside of class.
And that's, I mean, this is how it's worded on there?
Yep.
I mean, I don't...
And I will say, we're at 92.1, which is lower than the state average, which means 92% said they did. It's just that we're lower than the state average and we actually, I guess, got a little worse. Apparently, we'd have to look and see.
Oh, okay. So, I'm just misreading that.
From 95 to a 92.
Okay. I was like, I don't know. How else, how do you improve that?
Sure.
Blood brush. That was, I mean, that's, that's...
And to your point, the wording gets very tricky there and how they interpret it. That one, I would say I'm not overly concerned about because still 92% are saying.
Yeah, no, understood. I just, I kinda focused on that red X. And I was thinking, well, I mean, what do you mean, "There's no chances?" Or we have what we have and...
That's right.
And, you know, and offer them to the kids.
Yeah.
We went from 25 red Xs of decreasing numbers to five or six for this year. I mean, and when you look down at the depressed climate scale for just the high school, we went from 56 to a 34.
Right.
But I get what you're saying. Though just that question, it's like...
It just caught me off guard. I'm like, what else are you supposed to do?
What else we gotta do?
Yeah.
And Empowering Student Voice from a 29 to a 41.
I mean, overall, yeah.
And we're taking it again on October 22nd.
I was actually very pleased with this because I, that was our big emphasis when we hired her. I'm like, "We've got to turn some things around." And she's done some things that I think have, she's, you know, fought some battles and has done some things that I think have flipped this a little bit. We're not where we need to be. But if you remember correctly, that report the previous year was, was not good. No, in fact, you can look at it. And it's, you compare the two next to each other. I think you can see the, the significant improvement. But to Craig's point, some of these questions, you, you look at them, you're like, "I don't even know how we're supposed to even address these" or, you know, and depending on how the kid interprets the question, what are you even supposed to do, you know?
Like, it was just one of the odd ones that kinda caught my attention. It's like, how do you?
It's like, it's not like we say...
Last year's comparison dropped just a little bit from last.
It's like not, we don't ever say, "You can't do these things."
Right.
You know, it's like, we just offer them and...
Yeah, it's kinda volatile.
It's available to everyone, you know?
Big what?
Yeah, I, I hear you. That's all I have. Take a look at that. That kinda gives you a macro view of, of culture. I mean, not that Kansas Communities in Care Survey is the pure proxy for culture, but I do think that some of that data kinda gives you an idea of what's going on in our schools.
Direction.
Other than that, that's really all I have.
Okay. Now, there's no executive session today, so we are...
Guys, thank you for coming. I appreciate it. This is kind of an awkward meeting. John, thank you for attending. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're gonna have to...
Whitney needs to sign.
Yep, yes. Whitney needs to sign. Back in.